You ready? We'll call to order the regular city council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Here.
Dederman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Uh, councilmember Dederman.
Your Honor, approved minutes of regular city council committee of the whole meetings of February 27th, 2024, and they be approved as published on March 12th, 2024. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
All right, moving to public hearings, we'll convene a public hearing concerning the sale of city-owned property at 415 Second Avenue South to Shirley Home for $501. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
All right, uh, is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any councilmembers that would like to address this public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of 415 Second Avenue South to Shirley Home for $501. I move this be adopted as read.
I see.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning the city's Community Development Block Grant Application Downtown Revitalization Funding to make facade improvements to the Ankeny Building. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor, but Dan, what ECI is on?
Hey, Dan, how are you, sir?
Hi, everyone. You hear me all right?
We got you loud and clear.
All right, very good. I appreciate the opportunity to do this virtually as we tend to be doing this lately. So we're, we're here again, uh, as we were in November, did not quite get enough of, uh, or get every subcontractor on the Wilson Building cleared by the November deadline. Uh, but not much has changed since I was, uh, at the November meeting for this, uh, similar resolution. So we need this new resolution and, uh, the extra time has also allowed us, uh, to provide a separate light report for each of the addresses at the A to D building that it's annexed. So that's a little bit more what Sarah, the manager in Des Moines, kind of wanted, so we were able to add that to our application, which will submit very shortly. Uh, but anyway, this is a special 2024 Downtown Revitalization Program, and we're applying for the full amount of $650,000. And the city council is committing to, uh, offering a match assistance in the form of a dollar-for-dollar, uh, match with the property owner currently estimated at $81,250 from the property owner, and thus $81,250 from the city. Um, you are also committed to and have committed to the mitigating of slumming light in our downtown district. And I think that's pretty well documented, uh, uh, just take the comments you made when you were sending this public hearing, you continue to demonstrate this as we close out the five facades for that COVID, uh, uh, facade grant. And Iowa Economic and Urban Downtown Center, uh, has just made it in a visit to your, uh, downtown, and they toured the upcoming catalyst grant, uh, which is going in in the middle of April. And they also observed the completed Wilson Brother Building, they made really nice comments on how much improved that has looked. So I think we've demonstrated our, uh, uh, our commitment to, uh, uh, to these efforts, and we would appreciate your consideration of the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Uh, is there any citizens that would like to address this public hearing? All right, any council that would like to address the public hearing here? How soon will we know? Dan, do you know what the timeline is on this?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think they, uh, have indicated we will know, um, sometime, I think by June, probably earlier than that. And so we can set contracts and everything, uh, and be ready to roll with the next fiscal year, but they, but they are committing funds from 2024, so we'll know pretty soon, I'm guessing mid-April. Last year, the deadline was in April, and they, and they announced in about mid-May. So I'm guessing two to three weeks, and we'll keep you, uh, updated as soon as we hear.
That's perfect. And you've beefed this up, and it's good, and probably gonna get awarded?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, you know, I can't make any commitments, you know, where we're all flat down is, is for downtown in general, we're concentrated on that, very needy, and but, you know, just a really important building, and it's a, a great example of kind of that art deco look with, uh, with the terracotta. It's a great building, and so we feel pretty confident about that. They certainly came back to us and said, we're, we're introducing these funds, we're really sorry that, you know, we just couldn't get everything cleared on the Wilson Building. So ISFAP will have a strong application, but it will depend on how much competition there is out there. But, uh, well, we're certainly, uh, hoping for and think we're worthy of, uh, full funding on this.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. As Dan said this, and Matt said, this is the special round of funding, because we didn't get in the original one, we, the Wilson Building wasn't quite closed out yet, so. Okay, anything else for the public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution approving Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG, for downtown revitalization, DTR facades, fac- fuck that, facades, project special application and pledging local effort. I move we adopt this resolution as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning the proposal to lease certain real property to Clinton County for a portion of the building located at 121 Sixth Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any councilmembers that would like to address the public hearing? All right, just as a note, you can see the, the, um, three items in there that are housed in that building. This is part of the police, uh, station that we bought. This is dot, we call this dot B. Dot B, so, um, anything else for public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a lease agreement by and between the City of Clinton, Iowa, and Clinton County, Iowa, for a portion of the building located at 121 Sixth Avenue, Clinton, Iowa. I move the resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving to audience comment section, I have one here, uh, Mr. McLean.
The subject is beehives. Uh, a person who is buying on contract a piece of ground for me, uh, has a beehive. The police sent me a note about it because I'm still on the title of the land. And in trying to look into this, I've found a number of things, printed out some things from the computer, but I, my question is, is, and I don't have any answer yet, is why in the year 2020, they changed the distances? I'm assuming they had reasons, I'm just curious what they are. Partly because in what research I have done, the, um, information is, is that most of the longer distances have been reduced from some of the cities, uh, such as Los Angeles has just recently changed their, uh, uh, bee ordinances, and it passed with a vote of 15 to zero. And in it, they had an area per beehive of 2,500 feet. We have listed a beehive, and they say, uh, two acres. That's over 87,000 square feet. You put a lot of beehives in that, in, if you had it in Los Angeles. So I'm assuming that maybe this two acres could become more reasonable, such as a half acre, which is fairly prevalent in Minnesota and in other locations. The other thing was, is the, how close it can be to a lot line. There was a miscommunication, some information that I had gotten, uh, but the big thing is, is most places anymore are going as short as five feet away from the nearest building. But that's in a town where you have apartments side by side and so forth, so I don't think that's necessary, but what they did have was pretty adequate, it seemed like. If I knew what the reason was why they wanted to do it, so I could tell, uh, my buyer that why it is, has been changed. But some of the towns that have gone along with the new changes, I think most of you heard of them, places like San Diego, San Francisco, New York, Toronto, Paris, London, if you haven't heard of any of them, I'll be happy to let you know about them. But there was something very interesting from, um, Boston. They had reasons why they wanted to change things, and I'll have to quote here. Honeybees contribute to the greater biodiversity within urban cities by supporting, strengthening plant and tree growth through, uh, pollination. They also went on to say that this also is somewhat of a help for people who are, have money problems, that some of them are using the honey themselves, some of them are selling it. But you have also heard of the, uh, honeybees having a collapse in their, uh, system. And so many towns have decided it makes a greener world with this. And, uh, I thought that those were reasonable reasons to see that perhaps in the year 2020, the council may not have had as much information as they could have had, they probably would not have made the decision they made. And if anybody wants to see a YouTube about it, I was look, looked up one of them by accident, and I found it to be interesting. If you do have, decide to go with a honeybee, one thing that surprised me, you have to have water source for it. Otherwise, they're gonna find somebody's swimming pool.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. I will let you know that I have had correspondence from a couple people, um, possibly your renter, I don't know that for sure, but myself and a couple councilmembers are gonna take a look at this and work on it, so.
Okay, maybe I can be leaning home, so I'll just take you home.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, is there anybody else that would like to address the council that's in the room? Is there anyone online that would like to address the council? Doesn't look like you. Okay, all right, moving on, we'll go to consent agenda, councilmember Davis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Ellen?
Six P.
Six P?
Ball, six ball.
Yep, I got you. Anything else from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, can we have roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I re, make motion to receive, approve, and place on file claims listings one and two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the claims? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
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 Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank your honor. Resolution authorizing the mayor to program the North River Drive project as part of the RPA 8FFY 2025-2028 Transportation Improvement Program, known as TIP. I move this motion be approved as, adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this?
Councilmember Obrin. On the application, down at the bottom, bottom, bottom of the application, there's a line, there says, "Construction shall be programmed for FFY 2028 pending future federal grants." I think it's a little bit ambiguous, and what I'd like to change is, uh, "Construction shall be programmed on or after FFY 2028 conditionally upon receiving future federal grants." Because I know that's what we have meant, that we're gonna get federal grants before we start this project, and that one, the way it reads right there is, it, you know, pending future federal grants. If we get it, are we still doing it? I mean, it just, for me, it would just change a little, that's how, what Ron and I were talking about earlier. And we both saw the same thing, and we just kind of wanted to maybe...
Can you repeat that line for me again?
Okay, so.
Just so.
Construction shall be pro-programmed, and then change it to on or after FFY 2028, so it actually doesn't lock us into 2028, it could be 2029. Conditionally upon receiving future federal grants.
Okay, my one thing would be, um, being in the, in the TIP program, it, it does have to be programmed for a certain date, so I'm not sure if on or after that fiscal year would be sufficient, and Jason would be able to answer that question a little better. But it's possible. I, I like the, I like that line. I think it, it makes more sense in what we're trying to convey there, yes.
And the idea of on or after, because maybe it's gonna fit better in our CIP going forward in '28 or '29 or '30, we don't know. But if we have to name a date, I don't want to say 2027, because like, that's too soon for us.
Right.
And if, you know, we're looking at FY 26, '27 for the Drive to Prosperity Project, the earliest that we could potentially do something is '28. Maybe we want to say 2029, so that gives us that leeway. I don't, I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing those...
The anticipated funding and everything above, it all aligns with that statement, though.
Yeah.
So I think Jason did this for, set it up for a particular reason.
I, that makes sense, so the, just the title of it, it's the STBG for '25 through ' '28. That's probably why it says '28, because it has to be on this, on the TIP in order to apply for the grant at the federal level.
Oh, so it's like, it's like a three-year.
Yeah.
Right.
Thing, so. That makes, it makes sense, yes.
Doesn't that last statement lock us into?
It does not.
Having to do the construction in 2028?
No, because it says right there, pending future federal grants.
There's, there really is potential that if grants awarded, that the fund, or the, the study could not even be completed by '28.
Right.
Yeah. So what is this, what's this doing? Is it's, it's putting it in our transportation improvement plan, is that's what the TIP is? And it's, it's putting it in that plan as a placeholder for future, uh, road projects. And anything that's federally funded goes through the TIP program, so like Manufacturing Drive and all that stuff goes through there. If we were redoing Third Street, that doesn't go through there, because we're not seeking federal funds for that. If we were, then that would go in there. Does that make sense? How that, so according to Wade Gryman, it has to be in the TIP for us to apply for the grant to get this...
And then the other thing that came up in my discussion with myself looking at this is, if something happens on the state level for Route 30, how does that affect this grant, if at all?
I don't, I don't think it affects this grant whatsoever, because this is trying to get community project funding from Miller Meeks out of the Appropriations Committee at the federal government level. It doesn't have anything to do with the state.
And this is just to complete a study?
This is to complete the study and the 403B permit through the, through the, uh, Corps of Engineers to determine if you can even do the project or not.
Oh, so this doesn't obligate us?
No, no, no.
No, and, and in the future, uh, priorities can change, I mean, to be honest, right? So if in FY '28, even if you had the funding, or even if you had the study saying, yes, you can do this, priorities change. That decision would have to be made with whomever sitting up here at that time.
So this is basically what they call shelf-ready, making it shelf-ready, is that?
Correct.
Is that what it does?
Yep, shovel-ready, yep, absolutely. So that's what, that's what this is, is doing.
In the big picture, I like it.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution setting a public hearing on proposed tax levy for fiscal year 2024-2025 City of Clinton, Iowa operating budget. Move that it be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? And this is just part of the process laid out by the state for us to, to do all this? Anything else for this item? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution approving an investment policy and rescinding all previous versions. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this?
No, but this is a good move, so I think this will be good.
And this, this came through Finance Committee?
Finance.
Yep. All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution to establish a public hearing on a proposed amendment to City Code Chapter 159.046A, parentheses C, parentheses 3, parentheses B as in Bravo, residential and utility scale, solar energy SES systems of the code ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa pertaining to large solar scale, scale solar, large-scale solar. I move this resolution to be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? So this is setting a public hearing, so it's nothing finalized today. So this is just changing the definition on large-scale solar, correct? Because right now, community scale and large scale are the same thing in our ordinance.
Right. I, I just, it, it only, none of the language has changed except for what you see.
Okay.
So all this does is change the, the, basically the limitations section. Expands it as the council directed and as discussed at the, uh, the Plan Commission meeting.
My, my one thought on this is, our current ordinance says that in M districts, it's 25 acres or less, right? That's what it currently says. That's what we talked about for six months, that's what we approved. We have one situation, and we're looking to change this, but if I read this right, in an M3 district, I can't have a community-scale solar 25 acres or less. Am I reading that incorrectly?
Well, um, you need 100 contiguous acres in M3.
Right, so if I'm Atlas Roofing and I want to put a 25-acre solar on part of my property next to my plant, I can't do it.
If it's, if it's an M3, right?
Which seems a little silly to me.
If it's large scale, right.
But, but I don't think it's, uh, if you look up there, um, I guess, okay, so under the definition of community scale, you still could do it, then?
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe community scale, I'm trying to remember what the language was. The initial draft had the whole ordinance, but we, we changed it to this, Lisa changed it to this, because of publication requirement, we didn't want to pay for a million colonnages just in the paper, so. If I remember right, they're both treated the same in terms of their impact on the local, uh, situation. If I remember right, from the other language.
So, so you're gonna have, I guess...
Community scale theoretically could be just as big as a commercial, if you wanted it, but it would have to meet those definitions.
Yeah, what, I forget, what was the reasoning behind 100 acres or more in M3?
Great question.
I don't know, but that's what came out of the Plan Commission, so that was the draft we provided.
Yeah, and I think Matt, again, we can't ask Matt.
Obviously, the council needs to review this carefully between now and the next meeting to determine if that's really what you want, but that's what came out of the meeting. Which I attended and watched Matt talk.
There are different definitions for large and...
I guess, yeah, I, I guess it's, this is defining large-scale solar in M1 and M2 as 25 acres or less.
Right.
Which is the same definition as community scale. I guess if, if council's gonna go down the road of changing this and allowing different acreages, then I think we need to be more clear on the definition of what community scale and what large scale is.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I always read it as meaning, it just, the purpose is different when it's community scale versus slightly different, is the reasoning, but the, they're basically larger-scale operations. But we can refine it any way the council wishes to reflect...
I mean, to be honest, I'm not excited about refining it at all, but if we do it, like we were talking earlier, I don't want to do it wrong, I want to make sure that our language is correct and it's clear, so that we're not back here in another month.
Six months with somebody pointing a finger at us.
Correct, yeah. Councilmember Obrin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on the definition part, I think that's where we're...
I just read the definitions, and they, they're different. Large scale seems to focus on encompassing an area larger than the parcel one may own.
But it's also, you know, this main focus was community scale. We got the solar folks here, um... Did, did you guys, Ryan, or, oh, there you are. Because you said at the Plan Commission meeting, your attorney and you guys were a little confused. Are you confused on what we're talking about, or?
I, I do agree that it'd be wise to just make sure that there is still clarity with regard to the difference between community scale solar and what limitations are set for that definition. And I do agree that some additional validation between the definition that's currently in the ordinance for large-scale solar now is, it syncs with what the new text revision proposes. So to answer your question, I, I think that your goal is to preserve the M3, M1, M2, M3 restriction for, of 25 acres for community scale, but then allow for 100 acres or more contiguous for a large scale. So that's clear to me. That's what you're trying to achieve. So I do also encourage just between now and the '26, just double checking the definitions and making sure that that's clear to everybody else. I know what the intent was.
So, yeah. I mean, this is just setting a public hearing for the next meeting. So we have, we still have some work to do, I guess, on being more clear and defined on those. Everybody's kind of on that same page. Makes sense?
I am.
Yes.
Well, it makes sense.
Councilmember Schumers, go ahead.
I, the way it's written, I'm going to say no one to vote. I'm not impressed with it. I'm not impressed with any changes north of Highway 30, quite frankly. We went from a small, one or two parcels to now we're adopting an entire M3. Cody, that's my opinion.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to tell you what I did, because I initially did an overlay for just that area, and then this is what got taken to the Plan Commission. So I don't know how. But I can send you that, because, yeah.
I'm looking at what I'm reading.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments, or we can?
And we can, like, over the course of the next two weeks, we can modify this and propose the modifications at the public hearing.
Correct. Yes. Because there will be a public hearing and then a resolution.
And then a...
Is this, this is a zoning change, isn't it? Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
So there'd be readings.
Be readings, right.
Yes.
So we have some, we have some time to...
We, yes. Because there'd be a public hearing and then, potentially three, three consecutive readings. So we're talking about a month there. All right. Any other discussion on solar?
Yeah, we can definitely talk about this, because, you know, you need to really look at the map and see M1, M2, M3 to start distinguishing what's where. Yeah.
I don't think the map's in here. Yeah.
No, it's not, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Let, can we have roll call, please, to set the public hearing?
Councilmember Schumers.
No.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing will be set. Uh, Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution establishing a public hearing on proposed amendment to City Code Section 159.027, SP Special Purpose Commercial and Historical Overlay Districts, and Sections 159.049 Special Use Regulations with respect to ground-floor residential use in the City of Central Business District Fringe Overlay Zone. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this? Where, you were at the meeting?
Um, well, the downtown was, they supported this. And then, yeah, the Housing Board of Adjustments supported it as well, so.
You mean the Planning Commission?
Ah, yeah. Duh. Sorry. The Planning Commission supported it as well. So, yeah, this is only in the fringe district right now, not the core district. So it doesn't include, like, primarily Fifth Avenue, just the outskirts, so, of the downtown. And they were talking about screening requirements and stuff. I think we'll kind of address that, because this is going to be like a special use process, right, Lisa?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis. Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution establishing a public hearing on a proposed amendment to City Code Section 159.023A for the C2 General Commercial District pertaining to one-family dwellings. Move it be adopted as read.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, this went to the Plan Commission, too. This basically allows pre-existing dwellings built prior to 2015 that were originally designed and intended to be used as a single-family dwelling, to be treated as conforming, not non-conforming, as long as they haven't been significantly modified. If they've been modified substantially to a commercial use, then there's no, there's no going back at that point. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
The only question I had was, why 2015? I didn't read anything about...
That was what was proposed to the Plan Commission, because that was when zoning mod, so C2 zoning always allowed single-family dwellings. And then when we redid the C2 zoning district for the landing, because that's Zone C2, that got removed. So then, since, since that was the date it happened, they set that as the date. Yeah.
Okay. I knew there was a reason behind it. I just couldn't remember what it was.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing on the proposed sale of city-owned properties for 44 Fourth Avenue South and 210 South Fifth Street. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Schumers.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution fixing date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a grant agreement with the YWCA of Clinton, Iowa, and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move the resolution to be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
This is just for the money we already pledged, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank you, your honor. I have an ordinance second consideration.
Please read the title?
Oh gee, what is it? It's a new one to me. Where's my title? Official zoning map of the City of Clinton. An ordinance to amend this official zoning map of the City of Clinton, Iowa by rezoning and changing the district classification for 1650 South 14th Street.
Sec, second?
Now what? I can read the rest of it?
Yeah, can you read the rest of that? From R1C, one-family?
There we go. Where's that at? Okay, here we go. From R1C, one-family residential district to M1 industrial, light district.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. So if you saw in the consent agenda, there was a revision to the application by the school district for this parcel to, instead of rezoning the entire parcel, I thought the map was in here.
It's, it is. It's 11.5 on this westerly portion, just where the solar will be.
Okay.
Perfect.
Where is?
It's in the...
Oh, it's in the consent agenda, sorry. Which, which item is that? Pull it up here. Do you know which item it was?
So that in, in this
6G.
uh, ordinance amendment, that does not reflect what is in the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, right now, we have, we're doing, is it the second reading?
Yes.
Yeah, to rezone the entire parcel.
Right.
I had spoke with some neighbors, chatted with Matt about it, and then he must have talked with Gary, and, and then, and then now we have this.
So that, so that under the purpose...
You can go up, Gary.
Yep.
Where it's, where it says commencing on the southeast corner, that paragraph is going to change.
Yeah, so we're going to have to make it reference this map.
Yes.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
So just given the feedback from the last meeting, it seemed like the direction, the neighbors were concerned about us rezoning the whole thing.
Right.
And I will say, there is no planning for us to sell it to Drives or anything like that. It's a, a good athletic facility that we'd have no plans. We were just trying to get it rezoned to meet the city ordinance to get for that solar field. So we did put an amendment for just that piece of land to be rezoned for that, which would be where the solar field is, and the rest of it would still be
Just stay as is.
As is.
Yeah, and I, and that allows you to move right on forward. You got everything prepared.
Right.
So, no, appreciate it, Gary.
So I mean, we're fine with that amendment.
Okay.
I signed off on it.
Okay.
Gary, thanks for working with us on that.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Sure. Yep.
I think it's...
How many acres is that?
I don't know.
It's, it's 11.85, and it's on the very westerly edge of the property, nowhere near. It's the highlighted shaded area.
Yep.
Yep. This is a shaded area. Okay. I emailed it to you last week, Lori, but maybe you didn't get it.
No, I didn't get it.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So then my question is, is that we're just setting the public hearing here?
Nope.
Oh, no.
We're, this is the second consideration, so...
This is the second consideration.
I, here, I, I know where you're going. I would, um, consider in a motion to make an amendment to, to this and to what the map is here that we approved and placed on file in the consent agenda.
Also move that.
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to make that amendment to this. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Can we have roll call on that motion, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Okay, the motion for the amendment passes. We have the original motion and second for the second consideration. Any other discussion on this? All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
All right. So that passes, and then as the third consideration comes up, it'll be amended to, to fit that.
Perfect.
All right. Unfinished business 6P. Councilmember Sealy?
Yeah, I was just, I wonder, how often do we do the, what do you call it, when you select them versus putting it out to bid?
Oh, the lottery?
Yeah. Oh. So was this actually a bid situation? Okay, sorry.
Oh, it does say right here, had a lottery drawing.
Yeah.
So they go out every year
Yep.
For the grass, for the nuisance grass.
Okay.
On private property.
Okay.
We do it yearly. They submit their application with all of their insurance and everything that's required. And then we do the lottery draw. Once we open, once the ion wave, we open it up, make sure everything's there. We throw everybody that qualifies in a bowl, and we draw.
Oh, wait. So we already bid it, and then it goes to, like, the lottery for selection?
We don't bid it. It's a standard. This has been this way. It's, there's no bidding. We've got the set prices. Remember, we have the $200 fine.
Yep.
And then we set the fees are set by, by the ordinance. I believe it's in the ordinance that what we're paying the contractors.
Oh, what is that at? What's that at right now? So that's not changing at all?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just, all we did was draw the contractors.
Okay. So they're basically agreeing to a predetermined fee?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
Yep. That's been the same for, since we've been doing it that way.
Okay. No, I remember we did this a little different, but I couldn't remember if we, like, bid it periodically, or...
Because every year, we do the nuisance, just like we do the property nuisance cleanups.
Okay.
In the snow, that's done every year with a new contract.
And that's working pretty good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we had actually more applied this year for grass. Would we have 10?
Yeah.